Today, now we're lucky to welcome y'all to the Portsmouth redevelopment Housing Authority Board meeting. We're making our city more inviting than ever. The Portsmouth redevelopment Housing Authority PRHA Board of Commission meetings are held on the third Thursday of each month at 5:00 P.M. All meetings are conducted at PRHA's main office at thirty-one sixteen South Street, Portsmouth Avenue, two thirty-seven zero seven, unless otherwise noted. All members of the public are welcome to attend. Madam Secretary.
All right, Commissioner Jigges.
Present.
Commissioner LaLondee.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Washington.
Present.
Vice Chair Chapman and Chair Smith.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
All right, Commissions before you have a meeting from July eighteenth, two thousand nineteen minutes.
There were some minor things that really had to do with proper verb tense, so if you would just go back and
Okay.
correct those without having to go into the bit-by-bit detail, because I know y'all have had a long day.
Thank you, Commissioner Jigges. Move approval.
No, what are we talking about? Oh, okay. Sometimes he talks so fast, I don't know.
No, he said thank you.
Oh.
He was taking, your note was well taken, she said okay.
Oh, okay.
And then he went right into it.
Oh, yeah, and let me just say, point of privilege, when we get to the agenda, I am going to have some revisions.
But go ahead for your second.
I second the minutes.
All right, Commissioner Jigges.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Corrections. Commissioner LaLondee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Washington.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Yes. Old business, Mr. Bland.
Yeah.
From the last meeting, it was some discussion on the five oh one C three, so I asked him to kind of go through the, what the five oh one C three.
Okay, excuse me, point of privilege again. You normally, you normally approve the agenda.
You're right.
And I had already indicated that I was going to have some revisions, so you have to do that before we go into anything.
But before we do that.
Yes, with the agenda, I would like to add a vote to the agenda for us to consider our City Council liaison being allowed to attend all of our closed sessions. I want that on the agenda for vote. That's my revision, so with the revision, someone wants a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
There's the motion, five seconds, okay.
All right, Commissioner Jigges.
Yes.
Commissioner LaLondee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
No.
Commissioner Roberts.
What are we voting on, the change to the agenda?
The change to the agenda to allow for vote on our City Council liaison being allowed to attend all of our closed sessions, be it whatever, inclusive of any personnel actions or whatever.
I agree to it being added to the agenda.
Okay, and Chair Smith.
No.
Okay.
You left me out.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Washington.
Yes. Old business, Bland. Oh, I can ask you, there's some discussion on the five oh one C three, so I asked, I found that revised to kind of go with what five oh one C threes are, what we have in place for five oh one C three.
I'll still take it even I know it.
Oh, sure.
I don't think, I don't think we'll have to want some more.
I'm fine, I'm good. Present.
Okay, one of the things, when Housing Authorities start to do redevelopment, we need to utilize a different structure than what we traditionally do under the Public Housing Program. And so that typical structure that's utilized is usually the creation of a five oh one C three that either serves as an affiliate or an instrumentality of the Housing Authority. And basically, what we do then is that we then create a sole asset entity, which is a limited liability company that would own the property. And the five oh one C three is basically the sole member of that sole asset entity. The reason that we do that is because the Housing Authority is the contract administrator for the subsidy that comes to the property. And HUD does not permit the Housing Authority to enter into a contract with itself. So you have to create a separate ownership structure in order to serve as the property owner of the property. Those properties typically need to carry through the five oh one C three tax exempt status. And so you have one affiliate normally of the Housing Authority, and then that becomes a sole member of each of these entities. And so typically, what you would see is two different types of structures. One is called a discrete component unit, that's the name that HUD uses for a unit of the Housing Authority in which there is a partner involved. And so in this particular case, I've actually used the Lexington Place One structure. And what we have here is that you create an owner entity, which is a limited partner. When you have a tax credit investor, in this case a partner, which is the, in this case, it's the U.S. Bank CDC, the Community Development Corporation, they are the investor into Lexington Place One, which is a limited partnership. The general partner into that partnership is Lexington Place One GP, which is a limited liability company. It is an entity that was created, it's a sole asset entity. It was created for the sole purpose of simply being the general partner in the LP, which they were created strictly to be the owner of the property. Then the sole member of this LLC is the five oh one C three. So the tax exempt status from the five oh one C three flows up to the GP, and then that flows up basically to Lexington Place. But you have your investment partner in there, so Lexington Place One, the limited partnership, is actually a for-profit corporation, because you have a for-profit investor that's involved. So this is the structure that's used when you have a partnership or you have a tax credit investor in the ownership structure. HUD refers to that as a discrete component unit. It's a component of the Housing Authority, but you have a partner in it, so you're not fully, you're not fully owning it. The second structure that's used when you do development is basically what's called a blended component unit. A blended component unit is when the Housing Authority has the full ownership and does not have other partners in ownership. Again, we would use our same non-for-profit affiliate, and then we would create, for each property, we would create a sole asset entity, which is a limited liability company. So this entity, think of it kind of as a shell corporation. This company exists for the sole purpose to own property. So they're the owners of this property, you'd have a separate one that would own the second property and so forth. Your nonprofit affiliate is the sole member of each of these limited liability companies. And this is a structure that actually HUD has recommended when Housing Authorities basically do development outside of the traditional public housing structure. So this is kind of the way it does it, there's two different structures, basically the, the one in which we don't have a partner, and then the one in which we have, in which we have a part, an investment partner. So that's why Housing Authorities create these other entities, because HUD basically does not allow you to enter into a contract with yourself. And because these properties have subsidy on them, we're the administrator of the Section Eight subsidy for the project-based vouchers. And so we have to have a contract with a separate legal entity. Any questions?
Yes. On, on the blended component unit.
Yes, sir.
There's an error that says that's the future, that's not now, or the blended component.
We have a couple of blended component units right now. This was part of the bigger presentation that we did earlier in the workshop today, and that's why you see the word future across there, because we were talking about the strategic direction and the future.
Okay, and the second part of my question is, to the first page, the, I'm always nervous when I go into partnership with myself. And, and how do you not think of yourself and your own advantage when you set up an entity like that? What, is it a fifty-fifty partnership with somebody, is it a sixty-forty partnership?
The partnership is actually in this one, okay, this is the partnership. U.S. Bank over here is the partner, because they're the investor. And actually, the way that works is, this is the owner entity, and the investor actually owns ninety-nine point nine-nine percent of this entity. And the reason that the investor has all of that ownership is because there's tax benefits that the investor takes advantage of, which we can't use.
How about on the first page? Explain that same scenario on this page.
This is a scenario to just kind of show what the relationships are. This is not an actual partnership, this is the relationship. The housing, there is a five oh one C three that is an affiliate of the Housing Authority, okay? So it's an affiliate of the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority then is the property manager and the subsidy administrator for this property owner, okay? This five oh one C three, this is a limited liability company, okay? And the five oh one C three is the only member of this limited liability company, because that way we transfer the tax exempt status to each entity. So this is more a kind of a generic explanation of the relationships. And then this next slide is actually an actual ownership structure for Lexington.
Thank you.
Other questions that anyone has?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, under the Lexington Place for the Limited Liability Corporation, and then you have sole member, the PDC. Who are you referring to?
PDC is the Portsmouth Development Corporation.
Okay.
That's your five oh one C three affiliate.
Right, and I'm curious as to the specifics of who the authorizing offices are and the actual structure of this five oh one C three. We don't have that information given out to us, and I don't even know if you can speak to the specifics or not.
Okay, the Portsmouth Development Corporation was actually created several years ago by the Housing Authority under a previous director. In order to utilize it in this structure for Lexington Place, we updated it and basically amended the, the information. My understanding is that's going to be presented to the board.
I thought I might be getting ahead of it, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it was, it's a corporation that's been around since the nineteen, it was eighties? Yeah, since the nineteen eighties, but it had to be updated to be able to use for this purposes. And the reason that that was done is because it takes a while to get a five oh one C three from the IRS. And so because it already existed, it was easier to amend the existing corporation that wasn't really being utilized to be able to have it fit the necessary structure for this, for this transaction.
Well, I'm going to assume, we're going in closed session on that, or is that just on the agenda?
Well, I'm sorry, no, it's not going to be a closed session, and we're going to be having a subsequent meeting to go into all the details of the Lexington.
Okay.
Great.
I thought we might be getting ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, I think we just kind of wanted to show the, the relationships of the entities, so everyone would understand it for subsequent meetings.
Okay.
Any other questions that anyone has? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. For finance, do you have anything? Security?
Nope.
Housing.
Commissions, before you have Resolution twenty nineteen, twenty thirty-four, this is write-off residence accounts receivable from public housing, followed by Resolution twenty nineteen thirty-five, writing off uncollectible residence accounts receivable assisted housing. Every quarter, we write off what we call uncollectible, these are tenants who have left the program, so we write off for a book purpose, but once, and then we also send it to estate, or something, or money, also there's something we put into the HUD website. So before you, those two resolutions, twenty nineteen thirty-four, the minimum operation, write off accounts receivable. And we did this in the past for public housing, and twenty nineteen thirty-five, to write off accounts receivable assisted housing. Any question on these two resolutions? So before you is to, Chairman, I think we do each one separately.
Yes, sir. Resolution writing off uncollect, off uncollectible residence accounts receivables public housing, Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-four.
I move that we accept the resolution.
I second.
Move private second, Madam Secretary.
All right, Commissioner Jigges.
No.
Commissioner LaLondee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Washington.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Yes. Commissions, before you have Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-five, Resolution writing off uncollectible residence accounts receivable assisted housing. Move approval.
Second. Unreadiness. Did you mean twenty nineteen thirty-five?
That's what I said, twenty nineteen dash thirty-five.
Okay, because I'm showing the next one in my manual, it's twenty nineteen thirty-seven.
No, it's behind, it's all under the same tab, because it's all within housing.
Oh, okay.
So it'll probably be the one right after the attachment. I think we, is it stuck?
So you can see it.
I've got thirty-six. Two thirty-five, where am I?
Page starts again?
Yeah, it may be stuck. I'm trying.
Yeah, that's why I didn't move these back, couldn't find them.
No, it's not in here.
Yeah, thank you.
That's on here, it's all chill. Commissioner Morgan, wait a minute. Okay, I have it, thank you, right old stuff. Okay, you can proceed, whoever it was.
All right, Commissioner Jigges.
No.
All right, Commissioner LaLondee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Washington.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Yes. Commission, before you have Resolution twenty nineteen dash thirty-six, Resolution authorizing the filling of the Section Eight Management Assessment Program to a vacation for fiscal year ending in, ending June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay, you have a four-year resolution number two thousand nineteen dash thirty-six, which is for the Section Eight Management Assessment Program referred to as CMAP. And the Section Eight Management Assessment Program is a tool that's created to measure the performance of the Section Eight program. And we do a self-certification, there are fourteen indicators. The first seven indicators are done by internal review and by our auditing firm. And then the second indicators are done through HUD's PIC process. And so we go in and pull the reports from PIC on a monthly basis, and then we're looking to see whether or not we're meeting the performance requirements of HUD. So your resolution before you is asking you to give the executive director permission to submit our CMAP for the end of our fiscal year, for June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. And so the resolution is giving him permission to submit this to HUD, and it has to be done within sixty days of the end of our fiscal year, so we would need to do it by August the twenty-ninth.
Just a question, so filling and submit are used interchangeably, when you say filling and filing?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I have a typo in there? Okay.
Yes, yeah, it's a typo.
Yes, it, when we are filing and submitting, where it actually has to submit it electronically, and it's gone through the PIC system, which is HUD's public information system, that we submit it.
Okay, yeah.
And so the executive director is required to do the submission. So we have done the review, and so Mr. Bland would be the one that would submit the submission to HUD.
Commissioner Roberts.
So what's our score?
We are, we at a hundred percent, we're submitting, self-certifying as a high performer.
Awesome, great. Commissioner LaLondee.
Just want to say, Carol briefed the, yesterday about this, and one of the things that she's not saying, this is the sixth or seventh year in a row, that the Housing Authority's voucher, the Section Eight folks have received, the high performer grade, that's tremendous, and definitely a lot of work that's being done on her side. And as Commissioner Roberts said, not only a hundred percent grade, but a hundred forty-five points out of a hundred forty-five points. And that, that takes a tremendous amount of staff work, tremendous amount of leadership to do that, so thank you very much.
Superb.
Thank you, thank you. And of course, you know HUD reviews it, and they have the option to come in and actually do a review. And you know, just like an IRS review, they may find some little issue or something that could change our score, but based on our self-certification, and based on the reports that we pulled out of the HUD database, we are self-certifying as a high performer.
And the best predictor of future behavior is what? Past behavior, so you were one hundred percent in the past, and we don't expect anything less.
Well, well, okay.
Here, here. Thank you.
I move that we accept the resolution authorizing the filing of the Section Eight Management Assessment Program.
I second it.
I already did.
You did?
I did.
Okay. Let's have fun.
Okay, Commissioner Jigges.
Yes.
Commissioner LaLondee.
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Washington.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Yes. All of our development stuff is in closed session?
All of it?
Yes.
Human Resources, I don't have any of that reports, yes, ma'am, go ahead. Gotcha, except the last one. We are, we're taking that off. Commissions, you see before you.
What have we taken off?
Resolution twenty nineteen forty-two. We'll bring that back to you at the September board meeting.
We don't, I only have forty-one on mine.
It's a forty-two.
You get the revised paper in front of you, it should be a revised piece of paper in front of you. Underneath, look underneath your papers. There it is, that's it, right there, keep going.
Oh, this Resolution, this is forty-three.
Yeah, but it's also in your binder, it says two thousand and eighteen.
Open your binder up, that's why, you ain't got it, it's open your binder, it should be in your binder.
It was the authorization to close this one Lexington.
Okay, I believe y'all, everybody else got it, we can go forward. Let's, let's move.
So you're looking at, you're looking at the one you got at home, but if you look inside, you're finding too.
I got you, we're going in closed session, I'll have it.
Okay. Reports. Mr. Bland. Commissioner, what in your board packet were the July significant activity reports? Any questions, comments regarding that report? Commissioner LaLondee.
Just want, just a couple, on the housing vacant unit inspection summary, we're still showing that Lincoln Park has a hundred and seventy-eight units. I don't know if we need to start making some adjustments, just to tour those units down, so that would properly reflect the, the public housing that we have. And I think, I think that was it, so it was, it was a great report, as always. I'm always impressed with what the staff is, what you've got going on staff, and again, Mr. Bland, I just comment again, your remarks there about what you're doing for the month, it really helps, so I really appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, well, and I want to give that thing to the, to the staff, they do a tremendous job, and I really appreciate it. Gotcha, all right, remarks, Mr. Bland.
Uh, Commissioner. Excuse me, I'm sorry, point of privilege, at what's point are you going to add the revised for the vote on the agenda concerning the City Council liaison? Are you going to do it when we come out of clothes, I just want to know.
What will we add there, Karen?
Well, we can take care of it now.
I mean, I just wanted to know where, I mean, I wasn't trying to make it now, but I just, you know, want to make sure we didn't lose sight of it.
We can do it now.
Okay.
But I'd like to weigh in on it before.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
This issue has come up before.
I know.
And I've done some research, and I'd like to just express my opinion.
Okay.
And the question is, is the City Council liaison required to attend the authority's closed meetings? And under FOIA, there's no requirement that mandates that a City Council liaison shall attend authority's closed meeting. Virginia Code, Section two point two, thirty-seven, twelve F, provides a pertinent part that a public body may permit non-members to attend a closed meeting if such person is deemed necessary, or if their presence will aid in the discussion of the topic of the meeting. Additionally, Virginia Code two point two, three seven, twelve G, provides that a member of a public body shall, shall be permitted to attend a closed session held by any committee or subcommittee or any entity created to perform functions or advise that public body. The authority, however, is not subject to this provision since this is not a committee or a subcommittee of the City Council, nor was the authority created to perform any delegated function or to advise City Council. As such, the FOIA does not provide that we can mandate a City Council liaison to attend all of our closed meetings unless there is, unless it's deemed necessary, or their presence will aid in that closed session discussion.
Okay, and with that said, and you're quoting FOIA, which is Freedom of Information Act.
I'm quoting Virginia State Code.
What you, you reference FOIA.
Correct, which is.
Freedom of information.
Which is under Virginia State Code, which is the law, so we're subject to that, that supersedes anything.
Right, but in, in being subject to it, we would not be in violation if we vote to allow our City Council liaison to attend our closed session.
Yes, you would be.
No, no, we would not.
If you voted to it, and you are voting against a code that already exists that says that you cannot mandate someone to be in a liaison just to be in a meeting, that's against what the code is saying.
Then, then the city's other authorities are in violation, and I don't think they are.
Well, I'm not the city, I'm just speaking on behalf of the authority. And we're discussing your question as to whether or not the liaison can be in all meetings. And the issue, and I'm sorry, the Code section specifically states that it's only if it's something pertaining to city business in this case, or if they will be, you know, added to that discussion. So on specific matters.
Yes.
You can vote for that specific, I mean, for liaison, I mean, I'm sorry, you can permit the liaison to come in, but you can't just generalize that they can come to all meetings. So when it was a subject matter for a closed meeting, then it's up to you all to determine whether or not that that person, liaison, sorry, would be subject, I mean, would be permitted to come. But to make a blanket vote on it would be a violation of the Code.
Okay, and obviously, I, I disagree with what you were interpreting it, and I'm going by steel the other authorities for the city of Portsmouth, that have City Council liaison. They attend the meetings, the closed sessions, in an ex-official capacity. And with that said, I don't think us voting to have our City Council liaison in our closed session meetings will violate the code. But let me also say this, and this is where I need clarification, because my understanding is you are actually the attorney reporting to our executive director.
Actually, I'm the attorney who represents the Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, and I give legal advice to the executive director and to the board.
Okay, with that said, because that brings up the next question. Because we have an attorney, an outside counsel, that we are not, to my knowledge, since I've been here in February, we are not taking advantage of utilizing that particular person. And this is, and this is no disrespect to you, Attorney James, but I think on the organizational chart, you report to our executive director, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so therefore, obviously, my concern is that on legal matters, I would also want our private attorney to weigh in on some things. Now, personally, on this issue, I don't think it is, rises to the seriousness to prevent our City Council liaison, who was appointed by City Council, to attend our closed session meetings. And with that said, I would like it to come to the floor for a vote.
And just to clarify, you mentioned, you know, what City Council does, and I read the second statement, and it says that under a public body, they are, they can or shall be permitted, but we're not subject to that clause or Code section because we're not a committee or a subcommittee of City Council, nor were we created to perform any delegated functions by them. So we're not subject to what you're referring to, because we're a Housing Authority, and we weren't created for that purpose. So that doesn't apply, so that, that wouldn't apply to us.
Neither does the Economic Development Authority. They are appointed under state code too. And the liaison to the Economic Development Authority for the city of Portsmouth attends all of the closed session meetings, and I don't think they are in violation of any state code. And with that said, I wanted to come to the floor for a vote.
Vice President, hold on, hold on, Vice President.
Okay, so I'm just going to make mention of what I know. Of course, I was the Chair of Economic Development, and the City- Um, of course, I was the, um, chair of economic development, and the city council liaisons did attend. Uh, but they are appointed, um, just like you all are on this board by the city council. Um, the difference, I guess, with the Economic Development Authority and this board of commissioners with the P- Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority. Attorney Ashby, Solomon Ashby, who is the city attorney for, um, council, um, in the city, mentioned that you and he would sit and have some discussion about this, because the mayor, the city manager, and the entire council is under the impression that I should be a part of that. That's why I was appointed to be the eyes and the ears and, and the conversation, uh, to bring back to city council, because otherwise, we would have no knowledge of why or what, you know, decisions were being made on, on this, uh, behalf. So, uh, my suggestion is that you and Attorney Ashby sit down and come up with, um-
Actually, well, I don't know if you remember, but we did have the discussion, and that was my, you know, final conclusion that under the code, which is, I, I have to adhere to the state code. Not, you know, anything outside of that.
Right.
So based on that, then that's, that's our position.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ruben.
Commissioner, Commissioner, uh, Washington, go ahead.
Yes, uh, mandate it, uh, I'm understanding that we can't, uh, as a board, mandate-
Her to come, me to come.
Yeah, but it doesn't say prohibit.
Absolutely.
And, and, and you also stated that, uh, as we deem needed.
Correct.
And I, and we did take, uh, a, a vote.
I know you did.
And the majority said yes.
They said yes for it to be on the agenda, not just to decide to be on the agenda, but not to allow what, um-
It just says an agenda item.
He is supposed to have a vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, and let me just say this. There is no legal reason for our city council liaison not to be able to sit in our closed sessions as a ex-official, non-voting member. And I, I, I take offense that we're trying to use that code, because once again, Economic Development Authority, the authority has their city council liaison, and their city council liaison sits in their closed sessions. And then, I have to ask the question, why not? Why not our city council liaison cannot sit in our closed session? There's no reason, there is no credible reason for our city council liaison not to attend all of our closed sessions. And I still want to see the vote. It's on the agenda asking for a vote, and I move that we allow our city council liaison to attend our closed sessions, all of them. And I just need a second if I can. Russell, then I have a follow.
Commissioner, Morgan?
Prior to any vote, and I, I, I think I, I want to at least clarify myself before, if anything were to come for a vote, I've got no problem with, uh, with our council liaison attending. And I think if I hear, if I heard correctly, there's nothing prohibiting her from coming. I think an issue here is whether we approve a resolution for something that she's already allowed to do. But by, by, by approving the resolution, we are in effect mandating that she has to come.
And we don't want to do that.
Which is what I believe we're being told she, we can't do. So I, and, and if I remember correctly, at one of our recent closed sessions, she was there. And so I, I don't think- I, I don't think we're trying to, at, at least from my purview, and that's all I can speak from. I don't, we're not trying, I, at least I'm not trying to disclude, uh, the city liaison, the city and the authority when working together, that's what, that's what we're supposed to be doing. But I think the resolution, and from what I'm understanding-
That's correct, you're correct.
Is not, not needed, but it's also a mandate, uh, ma- uh, mandating something that we can't do.
Do you wanna respond, or do you want me to respond?
Yeah, I'm, I'm responding, um, I mean, I mean, of course, um, uh, the makeup of the board before this board, um, and when I first came on the city council in two thousand and seven, um, the city council specifically appointed new board members because they wanted to know what was going on with this authority. And the question came up, you know, in our meetings, you know, what are they trying to hide?
Exactly.
So why don't they want you in the meeting? So the mayor, the city manager, um, and the city attorney are under the impression that this is, I don't know what the conversation was that you had, Council James, um, but even our attorney is saying that he's gonna still look into it, because they wanted me present, uh, for it. But I'm not gonna be a person who's gonna cause any controversy when you ask me to step out of the room and that I'm not permitted in here. I kindly pack my things and I leave, and then I report back that, that I was asked to leave after the development issues were, were discussed. Um, and I don't want it to be an issue where council feels like they have to go in and reappoint a whole nother board, because they have no problem with taking everybody off and putting them back on. We've done it one time, and they, rather than do it again, if they don't feel like they can get what they-
Exactly, and, and, and I'm coming from this perspective, and, and we'll go in.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Ross. I, I'm trying to understand what would preclude the city council liaison from being here. And Ed, I'm, I guess I'm gonna defer to you, 'cause you've got much more experience in the housing authority world. Why would we not want, what, what subjects, what matters would we be discussing? That we, I, I know being a quasi-government entity, that we have cer- cert- What, 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 what issues would we want to discuss that we would not want the city, city council liaison to be here?
Not a single one.
Cut me off, go.
And, and I guess based on the reading of the, you have that discretion.
Yes, ma'am.
You have the discretion, so, you know, something comes up with, for, uh, foreseeable future, that-
Because the word you said was where the city council liaison was needed. I'm just trying to figure out where, where would we not want cooperation from the city?
That's right.
And I think that there are personnel and legal issues which would not be appropriate for the, the liaison to participate in, in all cases. And that's, that was a lot of what was going on at that time.
Well, with all due respect, I disagree. And I will restate it again. Any matter coming before this board in closed session, our city council liaison should be in attendance. Not to mention, and, and this is not you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, anybody. Because I believe when it was Mark Whitaker on before, I think he attended every, all of the meetings. There was no precluding, uh, from him.
I'm saying about what I'm about to say next, this is just me talking. It's insulting. I feel bad when our city council liaison has to step out of our closed sessions. Or if it's okay, does she have permission to come in during a closed session? That's ridiculous, we are appointed by city council. And anything that we are discussing in closed session, anything, be it personnel matters, anything, our city council liaison is entitled to sit among us at this table to hear the discussion on any matter that is in closed session. And for any of these fellow commissioners who feel differently, I would say to you, if it were you who was the liaison, you too would want to feel respected. And this is me talking. This is me talking, because I live in Portsmouth, I vote in Portsmouth, and I feel not having our city council liaison attending all of our closed sessions is an insult. And again, I want to see it come to a vote. I'm hearing, if I'm hearing you correctly, Commissioner Morgan, you don't feel a vote is necessary because you are of the opinion that she attended all the closed sessions, and I, I don't wanna misquote you.
Not that she attended, but I think that what I'm un- what I'm understanding is she is permitted. We're, we're voting on a resolution to permit her to do something that she's already permitted to do.
That's what you feel, okay.
And, but, but the other, the second part of that is, by formalizing a vote to do this, it becomes a mandate, and I think the term mandate is where, where it becomes an issue with where there's a, a, a question of whether code would allow a mandate to do that. Again, I don't think we're, that, again, I don't think-
Hold on, Commissioner Washington.
Anything we're saying, at least I, I'm not-
Yeah, you and me.
Is to, to not let her do it, but it's, it's to, she's already allowed to.
Correct, correct.
Commissioner Roberts?
And she's not. Um, I just, um, there have been instances, and I, you know, I'm, I've, we've tried to avoid this um, conversation, but we can't seem to. So, uh, there have been situations where we've had, um, and this were, you know, a year and a half, two years ago, where we had closed sessions, where information was subsequently reported to news, to reporters on television about it, situations where, as it says, adversely affected our bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body. And those issues stung us, they cost us more money, and they were issues which should not have been made public from our closed session.
Well, let me say this, and I wanna comment on that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Washington?
Yeah, I did have my hand. Yeah, I, I, I'm, I, I think I'm understanding the Virginia Code a little bit better here. I think it's not a pro- it's not a prohibition against our, our liaison being in our meeting. It's an issue of authority. And we are the lesser authority, and they are the greater authority. So we can't tell the greater authority how to, uh, tell us how we, to do our job, or tell us how to do their job. And I think this, the conversation is, is being guided by, um, that word. And we have to be cognizant of our authority, because we are appointed by the greater authority-
City council.
To do a particular job. And whenever we have, our liaison can be of the greater benefit to the authority. It facilitates, and what doesn't happen is, it facilitates coordination, higher coordination, higher communication, and a, uh, what is it, a smoother transition in doing our business, 'cause they need to know what we're doing as much as we need to know. And we've been through that experience, uh, for the lack of communication, coordination, and sharing information. So I, again, I'm strongly recommending that, uh, uh, we, we can't take authority from where we don't have, but I'm strongly recommending that we keep our liaison in all of our meetings.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, um, I would, I just wanna make the question about the news media and the information, because that was not, uh, shared by me.
Yeah, that's a little-
Somebody, someone else, um, shared that information, and when the news media spoke to me, they already had the information, and I said, well, if you already have or anything, you, is there nothing else I can tell you?
I don't think that was a good decision.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, if, if, if they had everything from A to B, I don't, A to Z, um, and they did a FOIA, or they got it from somebody else, then it was nothing else for me to report on, on, on that. And that might be your perception, but I'm telling you, you know, how it went to me, and the news media person is in the room.
Yeah, and, and, and actually, uh, Vice Mayor, you are not, you are not even required to set the record straight, because when you sit in a closed session, there are numbers of people sitting in a closed session, and any one of us-
Could have.
Could be the leak. So, we are never gonna point fingers at anyone about something leaking out of closed sessions. It happens all the time.
I don't think it should, and I will not be a party to a board where a closed session is not a closed session. I don't feel comfortable speaking my mind, and that's the intent of the closed session.
And as I was going to say, a leak can come from anywhere, yourself included. But here's the thing, when we go in closed session, we go in under oath that we took. And our city council liaison, by way of being an elected city council member and Vice Mayor, there's no reason that our city council liaison does not attend all of our closed sessions. And the fact that something leaked before, when I said it can, it happens, that doesn't mean that anyone around this table leaked it here, or at any, uh, authority discussion in a closed session. But the issue is this, it's a matter of protocol. And if the city council liaison can attend closed session meetings for all of the other appointed authorities, commissioners, city council liaison for this board can attend our meetings, carted blunt, end of discussion, and stop trying to hide behind something for what happened, who, whom, who nobody knows. But believe you me, there's enough leaks in city council closed sessions all across the country that if anyone tried to take a stance, I'm not gonna be a part of it, then we wouldn't have any commissioners sitting anywhere.
And I, and I just last comment, um, I think that one of the differences that I see, um, with boards and commissions, other ones that I've served on and other ones that I attend, is that the other boards don't handle their personnel matters at the board meeting. So if there's gonna be some personnel matters where you're gonna talk about, um, staffing, or, I don't know, legal matters, or, or whatever, then perhaps that need to be a separate part of, of a board meeting. I mean, if this meeting is adjourned, and now we're gonna handle personnel matters, I don't go to planning commission, I don't go to, uh, EDA meetings, I don't go to any of the other boards that I attend, and they talk about any kind of personnel matters. That's something that they do in another board meeting, in another closed, uh, it's not even a closed session meeting. It's, it's a private meeting that nobody is allowed to attend. So they're not talking about employee records, or evaluations, or any of those kinds of things during those issues.
Exactly the issues we're talking about, personnel matters and legal issues. Perhaps they need to be separated so that it's-
From the board meeting, it's not a board meeting.
What we were doing by, uh, you know, agreeing that you, we wanted you present for development issues. Maybe it feels different, and maybe we have to structure it differently so that that works. But because, when we arrived, those were the three topics that could go into closed session. Personnel matters, development issues, and legal matters. And they were always together, and that's where our problems occurred.
Well, it is correct, uh, personnel matters do go in closed session for this type of board, the structuring. And I still affirm, even so, there would be no ethical reason for our city council liaison not to sit in on any of our closed sessions, including those of personnel matters.
And again, the code section's a, a public body, which would mean the whole board, may permit non-members to attend a closed meeting if such persons are deemed necessary, or if their presence will aid the public body in the consideration of, of the topic. So again, it's a, the decision of the public body, as, it's in terms of what they deem that person to be able to attend the meeting.
Is it possible, we can, uh, restate the original things as de- as we deem it necessary for our city official, uh, to be in our board meeting, just opposed to-
In a closed session?
Mandating, yeah.
You mean a clo- you talking about a closed session?
Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a simple fix. We deem it necessary for her to be present in-
In our closed session.
In our closed session, we ain't mandated, we deem it necessary for her to be present, because we need her to do the business that we need.
Well, and again, it's the public body, and it's up to the public body to make that decision.
And that's what I'm saying.
So I mean, I, I mean, if you have authority to speak on behalf of the public body to make that decision, I mean, it's up to the public body, the board, to make that decision. Um, when we go into closed session, I think, I, I don't think you can just broadly say, and that's the whole point of this, say that, you know, um-
We deem-
The liaison can go, you know, into, uh, all the, all the closed sessions. Based on the session, would you make that determination?
Okay, but we can't say we deem it necessary.
Based on- Based on whatever the session is, not just broadly, for instance, tonight.
I'm just trying to fix it.
Fix what? This is the state code, you have to go to the General Assembly to fix the state code.
I get that piece, I'm just saying, uh, because we don't, again, that's an authority piece. We, we can't tell the authority not to be their authority.
Because if anybody's allowed in closed session, is, is they allowed in closed session? You can't pick and choose which parts of the agenda that they're prohibited to, or from.
Right.
Or either. If they're allowed in closed session, they're allowed in closed session.
And so we're only.
Would we, would we be able to create, 'cause I think, 'cause I think we did, I think we did this a few, like, a month or two ago. We had two separate closed sessions. So we could create a closed session that involved all development matters, or other issues that pertain, where we would certainly welcome. And then if we had personnel or other issues, create a second, a separate closed session, maybe the last agenda item. So we don't hold anybody up from, from anything.
So we have.
Well, question, who's gonna make that determination?
That's like secrets and super secrets.
I think that speaks pretty.
But you added other issues.
Right.
Other legal issues, there, there could be a legal issue on a time where we would want the, uh, council liaison to attend. There could be a legal issue that, uh, somebody would say, "We didn't want." I, but I mean, it's a, we all, you know, it's, it's, it's just, it's creating a separate avenue. So if we, if, if the issue is, we don't wanna inconvenience somebody, that we want them here for what we all want them here for, great. And then if we, if we find some things that may not be appropriate for somebody to be a part of, which would be usually a personnel matter. You know, again, we could still say, "Hey, we, we would want you to attend the second closed session." But we're, we can't mandate it, that's the whole point of the stuff.
You can't mandate.
We can always permit it, we cannot mandate it, and that's what the resolution does, unless I'm.
We can massage, we can massage it, so that it says, every time you read this thing for the, going into closed session. And add the caveat, and the city council liaison is deemed necessary to attend.
Right.
This particular closed session, every time, that's what we can do.
That's right.
Because I'm still firmly stating. The city council liaison can attend any discussion in closed session. And in October, bring it up with joint council. If you think that you have a firm footing on this. Because I'm saying to my fellow commissioners, our city council liaison is entitled. To all the rights and privileges of attending our closed sessions, other than voting.
Point of order, we don't vote in closed session.
No, other than voting, other than voting, other than voting. So, I'm glad to hear you're using robust rules, point of order.
Yeah, me too.
Commissioner Moynihan, we brought him a long way. So, um.
So, they can make a motion to try to do this?
No, not in my opinion, to do what? The, well, then, the most, I'll revise the motion, I may, I move that with each. Closed session document they reread to go into closed session. It include the statement that our city council liaison is deemed necessary to attend our closed session. Each specific time we go into closed session, with each document.
Right.
The authorization.
Well, that doesn't mean anything different from what you've already proposed, if you already deem them necessary. We're saying this should be on a case-by-case basis, if it's a personnel matter.
Case basis.
Okay, so when we get to the, you know, that time, and if you are deemed necessary, we will, you know.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm saying that every time.
Well, I guess when you say every time, that throws me off.
Yeah, well, every time, the authorization.
When?
Whenever, whenever the closed session document. Is composed for going into closed session, there'll also be a final line somewhere that says. And we deem our city council liaison necessary to attend our closed session.
Right.
But what makes it case-by-case is with each authorization closed session resolution, it'd be included.
Uh, but you just said it would be included on all the closed sessions?
Yes.
Why would it be included in all of them if you all are gonna do it on a, uh, you know, case-by-case?
Case-by-cases.
Basis, so based on, you know, that's one of the sessions.
I'm trying to understand, Attorney James, seems like you're trying to push back on this, and I don't understand.
I'm just following the law, I'm Officer of the Court, that's my responsibility.
Not to follow the law, and if that's the case, are you seeing Attorney Ashby, doesn't follow the law?
I, I didn't say that.
But that's what you're implying.
No, I'm not, I'm not applying that. But anyway, the court, I mean, the state code already gives you the, the board, the public body, the board's authority. To permit the person to be in there, so I don't know what further authorization we need.
Haven't been doing that.
She comes to closed sessions.
No, she doesn't come to all the closed sessions.
And she doesn't have to, if that's what the board deems necessary, that's all, that's the whole point of this.
See, this is where the confusion is, because our city council liaison to this board has not been allowed. To attend all closed sessions. And I'm stating again, that after your reading, is deemed necessary. That she be allowed to attend all closed sessions of this housing authority board. So, the way we can approach it, as we go through today, this will be good practice for us. Because she is deemed necessary, and the reason city council appointed her as our liaison. Is because city council liaisons are deemed necessary. That's why they have appointed liaisons, because they deem them necessary. Because they are their eyes and ears of the city council.
Uh, at what point was, and I'm, I'm asking Vice Mayor.
Yeah.
At what point were you asked to step out, and for why? Um, I was asked to step out, um, I guess about a year ago, um, because there were gonna be some legal matters that were being discussed.
And who made that decision?
The chair. And it was no formal discussion with me on it, so I just kindly packed my things, and I went, and I talked to the city manager, and I talked to the mayor. And then there was some discussion about it, and, and they stated that they, the two councils would get together. And have the discussion, because it was their impression and their understanding, even Pam Clopeau. And a lot of people on this list were emailing me after the, the information was reported in the newspaper. That council member was not, um, allowed in the meeting, and it was theory with everyone. Because they all said that they had been allowed, and, and when did this change?
Yeah.
You know, I had, you can look at, these are people here who sent me emails and say that you need to be in there. And if you're not in there, there's, that's definitely, uh, something that's being hidden, or there's some, some, some cause for, for the council to be. And, and, and there's concerns, there's some concerns that there are some things that, that, that the city is being left out of a loop on.
To not be.
So.
Okay, so my question is, why was she asked to step out?
Why was she stepped out, and also came up, that Miss Anna Lee wrote, a few years ago. And you said, you said, it said, she said this in the paper, that two, two, we were down to two candidates, picking this, picking Mr. Blaine and the other guy.
Oh, no, that, no, that wasn't.
That was in the paper, I was going, I'm going by, going by what we saw, that was in the paper, going by what's on the paper. It's not me accusing you, I'm going by what I saw in the paper, they say they spoke to you, that's what it was.
Okay.
But I, I feel like we're going two, three years backwards.
But that didn't come from me, though. I sit in city council meetings every day on closed session, and it's a lot more detailed, and a lot more serious issues. That, that I have to keep my lips zipped on, so I know how to do that.
Yeah, you don't, you don't even have to explain. Okay, you know, you don't have to, you don't even have to explain, because it's insulting.
Do you have your motion on the floor, go ahead.
Um, it, it was on the floor, and it says that as we deem it necessary. Our city council liaison will be allowed to attend all, all our closed session meetings. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Do you have?
Go ahead, go ahead, Elise, yes, please.
I guess the problem I have with this, are we allowing you all to do something that's legally not allowed, you know?
Yeah, that's state code, I'm trying to break the state code, I'm going to jail.
We don't want you to do anything that's illegal, and maybe more research, or, you know, information needs to be provided. Because other housing authorities I work with, the liaison did not sit in on personnel matters. So I guess I'm just trying, I don't want you all to do something that's illegal.
If we were doing something illegal, every time you go to our EDA meetings. That would be an illegal act going on.
But you all don't discuss personnel issues in EDA.
Only because the structure is, the director of development reports to the city manager. Our structure is different, because the executive director reports to us.
I don't think you can compare the two.
Well, that's your opinion, I feel.
No, that's the code, that's the state code, that's not my opinion.
Compare.
Specifically states that.
No, it doesn't say anything about the economic and development authority having a liaison. And so my motion is on the floor, I've got a second, can we move for the vote, please?
Okay.
Commissioner Jiggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Llandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
No.
Commissioner Roberts?
No.
Commissioner Washington?
Yes.
Vice Chair Chapman?
Upstain.
And Chair Smith?
No.
What's the final vote?
It does.
Um, let me see, hold on one second.
One upstain, three and three.
Yes, one upstain, three noes, and three yeses.
And again, just before we, you know, so this is a miss. The reason the no vote is, is because we've already been given the permission to do it. So the, so the repetitive resolution, or, is what we're saying is against code. So I think the act is not, and we're not saying the act of having the, uh, councilwoman in our meetings is wrong. It's just, it's the resolution, so that's why the no, why I could, you know, put my no vote.
Well, the way we, the way I revised the motion is so it would comply.
I'm going with the advice of our council.
Well, no, once I revised. Yeah, well, I'm just saying.
That's our, that's, that's dead now, we gotta, we gotta move on.
Well, is it dead, it's three, three?
It's done, it died. Three, three, one upstain, we moving on to our next item.
So what do you do with the tie?
It dies.
Period, is what you're saying.
Am I, am I right, Council, uh, uh, Vice Man? Yes.
I don't know, maybe you should ask your attorney, ask your attorney.
I'm telling you what happens, we've done it in the planning commission, we, we've had that happen, and if it do, if it don't go through, it dies. If it goes three, three, one upstain, it dies, it's over, we move on to the next thing. Our next item, executive director comments in Department of Affairs.
Commissions, uh, good news, we just got a, we got a call from our Senator Kane, that we got a. We put in for a security grant for fencing and lighting for our public housing community, we got, um, two hundred forty-nine thousand dollars.
Great.
And so hopefully the letter should be coming probably one day next week. And, uh, wanna thank Delores and Val, uh, for putting this together. I think we submitted the, the application three months ago, um, so with that, we, we would look at fencing, lighting. Uh, at our public housing community, that would be Swanson, that would be, uh, Seaboard, and Overly Westbury. We can't use that money at, at, um, at Dale or Hamilton, although those are not public housing properties. They, they are, they are a different type of properties. So once we get the, uh, the letter, then we would put together, we'll, we'll, we'll put together. Um, how we gonna spend that money for hardware at those particular sites.
And it's for lighting?
For lighting, fencing, uh, uh.
I thought I heard.
Hardware, hard, hard, yeah, hardware items.
What do you call hardware items?
Fencing.
Oh, well, I thought you had already said it, so I didn't, I thought we said hardware, you were talking about some additional hardware, I didn't know. I didn't know you were talking about guns or. When you say hardware, because you said fencing, lighting, and you say hardware, I'm thinking, oh, okay.
There we go.
We're gonna have guns too, okay.
And actually, yeah, that's, that, that's all I have, um, we will continue to work to, um, to improve our properties. Uh, that we have, um, I wanna also wanna, wanna thank, uh, uh, Elise of working hard for the election place to move that forward. Um, and also, what I like to do is, uh, I know we, we have an, I, a question came about the various forms for election. And I've asked Cindy to kinda talk about those forms for us, as part of the election, election place.
Basically, those are all of the closing documents that are gonna be necessary to close Lexington, and I think those are actually gonna come for the board at the next meeting.
Yeah, so those will be forthcoming, um, in order to close a tax credit transaction. There is a very large package of legal documents, obviously, and so we've been negotiating with the legal representation from the investor. From the lender, um, as well as from the housing authority, um, BHDA, all of the parties that are involved in that. So at the September board meeting, there'll basically be a presentation of the final transaction. Um, these transactions are very, um, very, they keep moving, and so there's a lot of moving parts. And so really, until we get very close to the closing, is when we'll have the final tweaking of all the final numbers and everything. So we'll bring that forward, and there will be a series of documents that includes loan documents, um, limited partnership agreement, operating agreement. All of the standard agreements that basically form the partnership and complete the financial transaction.
And we'll be getting to close sometime in September or something.
Commissioner, uh, Morgan.
And I'm sure it'll go over in with all the treasure, treasure documents, but just one, one issue that I just wanted to make sure that was part of that. When I was reading the, uh, documents that were, that were part of the agenda, the previous agenda set out. Where the monies are coming from, because from what I remember seeing, there is a significant amount of money come from, coming from the housing authority. I just wanna understand, um, for our purview, kinda where that's coming from, restricted, unrestricted, all that other good stuff.
I think it'd probably be very helpful to provide a summarized sources and uses statement for you. That will include where the sources are coming from, and, and what the expenses are for the development budget.
That's just really, 'cause I mean, I know when we did Dale one and Dale two, we were severely negatively impacted by the. We had figured there's gonna be approximately a million dollars between Dale one and two, and AHP funds coming through. That were, that didn't come through, and so the housing authority had to suck it up and put in an extra million dollars. Um, I think we're gonna get that money back.
Yeah, half a million back on it.
So we'll provide the sources and the uses, and then the sources will identify specifically where the housing authority funds are coming from.
Perfect, thank you.
And that's all I have.
That's all you got, all right, Commissioner's comment?
Are you gonna run a table, or how you doing?
Yeah, okay, I'll start, um, I, sometimes we, uh, do acronyms. Uh, and everybody doesn't understand those acronyms, so I, I can save it for development, but BGA. Uh, is one of them things that the general public want to know, uh, they wouldn't know what BGM stands for. So if we could use names with the acronyms, it would be most helpful for you to reference this, reference.
That's the business name, that's actual name of the business.
It doesn't, they don't have no other than, well, then, we could add that to it.
That's, that's just their name. That's just their name. It's their state corporation name.
Isn't that Virginia?
No, sir, I'm just, if you research, and if you go on to Virginia State, it'll say BGM, yes, sir.
Uh, also, um, then, these things seem to be popping up way back from nineteen eighty. Issues that are still on the books, perhaps we would benefit this, review some of these things that have been around for a long time. And I know they come up by circumstance and event, but it seems like we got a lot of dead stuff. That needs to be extracted and updated in our files. Uh, and then. I'm really, really pleased that we are moving forward with new housing. I remember my, and I'll, I'll close with this, I remember my, uh, first commissioner's session with, uh. with, uh, uh, in Richmond with the attorney Lisa Walker, Lisa E. Walker, who conducted the session, it was phenomenal. And one of the first statements in the commissioner's guideline, it says, "We will be committed to providing decent, uh, affordable," I wrote down the other word, "decent, affordable, uh, housing for, uh, our, our people." And I'm just so excited about the fact that we are upgrading, uh, properties that have been around for so long in the city of Portsmouth. And I hope we continue to do that. And I'll just close with that. Thank you, Commissioner Washington.
We're going around.
Oh, safe.
Whoever put, whoever put up their hand.
Safe, safe. That was.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, um, a couple of things. And first, let me say, I consider the staff here to be top notch. So I don't know what happened, but with my travel reimbursement check, when I went to Town Bank to cash it because it was drawn on Count, Town Bank, the check number had been left off. Now, I really don't know how something like that could happen because I know this staff and I can't even fathom how you can get it through the computer system without a check number. But before I went to Town Bank, I went to my own bank and was trying to deposit it in the ATM and it kept spitting it out, spitting it out, spitting it out. And, um, my bank is in another two cities away. And when I went to, because of my background as a bank examiner, I knew that this was a red flag. I didn't understand the red flag because it should not happen. So when I went to Town Bank, I went to the location on Portsmouth Boulevard, Ross. And let me say that the staff was very professional there. They made me feel welcomed because that is not my bank. But before I even got in the teller line, I went to the branch manager's assistant and I said, "Listen, um, something's wrong with this check, I don't know what it is, but for some reason, it's not allowing me to deposit it in my own ATM bank." And so they pulled it up in the system and they said, "Well, we can't see anything wrong with it." And the branch manager looked at it, but it took a lot of time with it. Then when I got in the line at the teller window, the teller window could, the teller couldn't process it because the obvious had been missed and that was that when this check was printed, the check number was missing. And I can only say this. If staff does not password protect your work, I would strongly encourage you to password protect your work because something like that should never happen. And I don't know what else is behind it, but I've never, in my experience as a bank examiner, come upon a situation where a check was printed without a check number because normally there are internal control procedures that prevent that from ever happening. So I did want to bring that up and bring it to your attention and ask that, uh, you report back to, Mr. Bland, to report to me and to the commission, commissions, commissioners as to how that happened, because it should never happen. Not if you have your correct checks and balances in place. The next, next issue, and Mr. Bland, I thank you for sending the ordinance about the grass cutting. But here's the thing, I don't want to look up one day and we have been fined because we've got grass growing taller than ten inches. Now, we know, everyone has been in receipt of the emails and we certainly want to try a different approach, some kind of way to make sure that we stay on top of our game with doing what we need to do to aesthetically take care of all our properties. And that's the only thing I want to say on it. But I think, I speak for the commissioners, you know, when we have this type of correspondence coming to us, that takes away from all the great things that we do and we don't want to take away from it. And so that ends my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Jiggetts, commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Ross?
Uh, two things, uh, number one, the check issue, and correct me if I'm wrong Shannon, I'm guessing those checks are ordered through a third party processor?
No, they're actually printed on card stock.
Oh, well, the, but the, but the actual check is from a third party?
You have to program it in the system and what happened was, I was leaving town on an unexpected issue for my mother and there was an issue with a prior check that Mrs. Jiggetts, the Commissioner Jiggetts already had, where it paid a fee. So I wanted to print it out of the Town Bank one because I had called around to all of our banks and Town Bank was the only one that wouldn't charge the fee because she didn't have a bank account. And so in trying to get out the door, they didn't have the proper setup, so I had to go in and put the layout and set it up for that particular bank account and it must have missed, but it didn't print the check number.
But isn't it, but there's supposed to be internal controls to keep that from happening within the system.
You would think, but it, it was something to do with the software, so I'll have to go in and I'll have to.
Yeah, find out, because we, you know, because, I mean, we know we're all honest here, but still, that's a indication of a serious weakness and a breach in internal controls. If the system can be circumvented to do that.
Right, but it wasn't, it was, it was just, it's a, it's a setup issue in a league for the check processing and you have to map it out to each of the bank accounts and it, something may not have been in there for that particular layout that it picked up the check number, so I do apologize, but I.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Second point I wanted to, to make and, and more importantly, Shannon, if that, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say what a fabulous job, uh, you did. Um, it's not very easy to take a four hour or however long we were actually here, presentation, but I found the information not only tremendously informative, but helpful and, um, I just thank you for doing that and Mr. Bland and everybody, thank you all for setting that up because I, I got more out of that than any other kind of training or anything that I've ever, uh, attended while my time with the board, so thank you very much and great job. Thank you very much.
Commissioner London?
Yeah, just a couple of things, uh, first of all, I want to say, I hope everybody's had a chance to look at the website. It, it looks fantastic, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done. But to continue, you know, being that person who likes to talk about good things that happen at PRHA, the Norfolk Housing Authority went out with this ten-page colored brochure in the Inside Business magazine, it pales, it pales to the website, so. I'm just, I'm just saying, I don't think we could ever, we could ever, we could ever not say enough good things about us and for me to get that in the city of Portsmouth, uh, from Norfolk, I thought, wow, I, I really would like to be able to put that up against them. Secondly, uh, I'm just asking if there could be some consideration either in the, uh, the city, significant activity reports or somewhere in your report, if we could talk about any safety or security items that are happening in our, in our housing item, uh, areas. I, I talk again, I read in the paper about Dale Homes and Swanson Homes. Uh, but I, I think it'd be nice if we could proactively bring it to the board, hey, we're having this issue with Seaboard or this issue with Hamilton, so at least we're, we're aware of it. Uh, there's been two now police resets in, in Dale and it'd be nice to get a feedback on what, what's going on and what the police are doing since we, we do say we need to put focus on both of those two. And obviously, two hundred forty-nine thousand dollar grant, we've put enough focus on safety and security, let's make it part of the agenda that we talk about safety and security of our, of our housing areas. That's all I have, thanks.
I don't have anything, um, public speakers, Parisian laws, prime minister speaker, uh, do we have any speakers?
I think so.
There have been none, okay, okay. All right, resolution intent to go into closed session, uh, resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-three. Whereas, uh, the Beating Pre-Information Act provides that the board commissioners meet in a closed meeting for the discussion or consideration of the disposition of publicly held real property, where a discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body as set forth in section two point two dash three seven one one eight three of the Code of Virginia as amended. The matters for discussion are twenty Cushion Street, twenty-four Cushion Street, twenty-nine Cushion Street, forty-one Cushion Street, forty-six Cushion Street, fifty Cushion Street and fifteen twenty-two County Street and fifteen twenty-five County Street. And therefore be it resolved that it complies with the Virginia Pre-Information Act and the above referenced sections of Virginia Code. The board of commissioners shall reconvene in a closed meeting on August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen for the discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property, section two point two dash three seven one one eight three. Does anyone have a motion?
Um.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair, there was another, there was a revision to that motion that included nine thirty Nelson Street.
Nine thirty Nelson Street, thank you so much.
Actually, we're taking off.
Oh, we're taking off, yes. Oh, okay, okay, never mind.
All right, um. We had talked, um, would this be the appropriate place to add a, a matter for discussion in closed session, which was personnel?
That should have been on the agenda.
No, um, no. We already discussed it and based on the information I received, it wasn't a matter, a personnel matter.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We'll get it, we'll get it.
Okay. Okay, wait a minute, point of, point, point of privilege here.
I need to know what's going on here.
I'll talk to you, trust me, trust me, trust me, trust me. Um, that's before you got here, that's before you got here, like, we was here talking, that's before you got here, but, um.
Move approval of the, to go into closed session.
Second.
All right, Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes.
Commissioner Lalandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.